We have a meeting to order. Welcome to the Whately Special School Committee meeting to go over the latest draft of the budget, as Darius was just saying, for the first press to approve for the Finance Committee to go with the Finance Committee tonight and then to bring to public hearing for public comment next Monday at eight...
O'Clock.
...o'clock.
In the morning.
AM. Okay. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to you guys.
Are we sure, because I have eight fifteen in mind?
Do you know what? We'll probably start at eight fifteen.
Yeah, right. Come at eight and we'll start at eight fourteen.
We could start the party while the two women's on.
Don't me eight.
I won't be here.
Yeah, Maureen won't be here.
Oh, next week?
You both have to make sure you make it.
Yes.
Got it, Eric.
Okay. So, I'm not sure who's going to walk us through.
Judy's going to walk us through.
What I've done is prepared two versions of the budget. And as we talked about at the last meeting, when I dealt into school choice, I had some concerns about trying to make sure that school choice was in a healthy place for you moving forward. And as we talked about, you know, back in the day, you know, you always sort of spent a year back and you didn't dip into the current year. Most school districts are now dipping into current years. And you're at that point where you've almost reached that precipice of, you know, falling off what's known, I guess, as the funding cliff, per se. So, after our last meeting, I went through school choice, took a look at things that are being expended, tried to offload some things so that we can, you know, have a comfortable balance moving forward. And also in this particular budget, to make sure that some things were back in the local budget that would allow you to at least have some sort of working balance. So what I've come up with for school choice, and that's on, I should know this pretty well, on page five of this handout, is looking at moving forward to through next year and at the end of next fiscal year, so that you have like a $38,000 balance, give or take, in school choice. It could be a little healthier than that, depending on how things go this year. But, you know, again, I've tried to take a look at, you know, things that are going on, so I just want to make sure that we're in a healthy place with school choice. So that's...
And just, I'm going to define that just for the camera, just because people I know probably care most about the budget, is that we talk about stuff, healthy school choices, that we are spending in the current year, school choice money that we're receiving this year. And if we spend, if we spend all of it, any difference, any student moving, coming in or coming out, could put us in a deficit.
Right.
And according, and we also ran it by, you know, our school auditor as well, that we want to keep about, we want to be close to $50,000 in the black in school choice at the end of each year, because any of those shiftings and any sped costs with shiftings or that kind of thing puts it at the school in danger spot. So if you were suddenly, hey, we were playing close to the fence and the way this budget's kind of, and we'll talk more about why this budget's unfolding now, and a student was to leave, then you were immediately making cuts in September. And that's not how you can build a healthy budget. And so that's kind of what we're talking about there. I just try to put in a little bit more...
No, no, thank you.
I hope that brings clarity to anybody.
Yeah, the rainy day fund, we always, we were always thinking of 50,000.
It's not even a rainy day fund, because a rainy day fund means the boiler blows up and you can use the money on that. I mean, I guess you could late in the year, but you can, because of student movement, you have to be very, you have to have that balance there. It's kind of a new, it's almost a new accounting game for school choice schools that are small like, like Whately is, and others ones in our greater district, that have to make sure that there's just enough there to allow fluctuation in student movement.
Right. And you always get a school choice number on your cherry sheet, you know, based on current, the current landscape, but there's always an adjustment in mid-year of the fiscal year you're in, depending on what the numbers are. And again, that adjustment for Whately was a downturn this year. So again, looking...
We lost five school choice kids who just happened to move to another community.
Yeah, but, and we also lost some special education money as part of that. That's why it was so dramatic this year.
Yeah. So again, those are all of the moving parts. So to really count on going right up against school choice, as Darius said, is a dangerous game to play, because two kids out and you're in a different place.
Thank you for indulging on that. Just wanted to make sure we were just very clear about it, because it gets confusing.
The other point for Whately is that we don't have the equivalent of a free cash fund for this school. The town has one, if we needed to go to that, we could potentially do that, but we don't want to. But the Frontier does have the equivalent of them to help be a little bit of a cushion for them. It's called a free cash fund, so it's like an extra savings account.
Sounds countryful.
Well, the town is our backup.
Because Frontier acts as its own town. It's the best way to look at Frontier. So any excess deficiency they have, we don't call it free cash, we call it E and D.
Yeah.
They have, you know, so they're able to carry over each year, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more of a much larger budget that can handle some of those offsets.
Right. And school choice is a fund you can access more immediately. If you had to go to the town for free cash, that has to be a vault on the pay floor and all of that business. So, you know, it's a different kind of thing. So, the first version of the budget, when I came through all of the changes and took a look at what was going on, and came up with a net change overall of an increase of 6.79 percent. And...
Which page are you on?
This is on page two.
Page two.
So you can see in the summary of changes, a 6.79 percent. Chrissy had requested an extra special education instruction assistant. And so at Darius's request, I just also factored what that would look like without that instructional assistant put in there. So that leaves you with, again, an increase of 5.56 percent, which is tough for a town the size of Whately to swallow. So I then, you know, spoke with Darius and Chrissy and just said, you know, what could we do to present a second version of the budget that would potentially have you in a healthier place and do least harm programmatically to children? So after some discussions, that's where version two comes up. And version two, basically, you have right now a full-time guidance, school psychologist person, you know, I took a look at things, you know, with, you know, sort of that lens of knowing what the money is and also knowing, you know, educationally, what can we do? And, you know, asked the question, could you live with a .5 FTE in that position versus a 1.0? So version two placed that out with the reduction of the school psychologist guidance position from a full-time position to a half-time position. Doing that brings down the net change to 3.9 percent. And if we did not add that special education instructional assistant, it would bring you down to 2.68 percent, which I'm guessing in a town the size of Whately is probably a much easier number to move forward with. So that's sort of the long and the short of this.
So that position was originally two separate people who had part-time positions retired, and they merged it into one position. It was a school psychologist and a school counselor. So we don't need, we don't need that? I don't know if there's requirements.
There aren't requirements?
There's no requirements.
Per se?
Great.
Yeah.
You know, looking at it, I mean, you know, Chrissy's not, Ms. Curtin's not delighted to do any kind of reductions, but...
I was actually asking for more money.
She was asking for more money, let's remember that, and that's what her job is to do. But, you know, looking at the services, you know, on a school this size, you know, having discussion, we feel that we can do it in a different, in a different manner, different fashion. You know, the psychologist portion, the amount of testing that was done, the number of cases that are being done, doesn't warrant a full-time psychologist. And also, you can also do outsourcing on that kind of stuff if you were to get over, if there's to be a sudden increase. And then, you know, the guidance level things can be done in a different, in a different way in a school this size. So that's, that's the, that's the thought behind that. You know, it doesn't change any of the programming for students, which is the number one concern in a school this size. There isn't a lot of wiggle in our budget, but the idea is that if we're able to make this correction moving forward, you know, we'll have a healthier balance at the end of next year as well, and be in a kind of, where we can build up the school choice as our own small, as if kind of setting us, no, we're looking, it's looking at our own free cash balance, and we want to always keep it at a spot where we have flexibility. You know, at the end of the year, you always can, you could always dip in if there was an emergency, but it's an area that we have to kind of build that moving forward, that you always have to keep a certain amount in that account for the fluctuations.
And it will probably take you a couple of years to get to where you want to be, you know? And thinking, not only with the FY '20 budget, but moving forward to FY '21, you know, how can, again, you make some adjustments to continue to build that school choice number to be, it can sustain a change in school choice, a child or two leaving, you know?
Okay, so being the newbie and all that, well, you're new too.
I'm old. It's okay. We're old timers at this point.
I just want to understand what's, what's going on. So without making that change, are you saying we're asking the town for close to 7% higher, more than what we asked for this past year?
Right. And that's based on step, the bulk of it is salaries, because really that is the bulk of your budget. I mean, you've got probably close to 70% of your budget is in salaries. So you've got contracts that have steps in them that people are entitled to for experience. We have tucked a potential cost of living adjustment in there, so that you're set for that, you know?
Is there a number that's sort of standard when school committees go to towns?
A number that they're expecting? Has been the number that we've been, that they've requested, but isn't like a level service increase more like a four point something usually?
Yeah, and technically, that's really what version two is about, is having that sort of level service increase. What has caused the tailspin is to have to shift some expenditures from school choice back into local budget. So that's what added sort of that extra two and three-quarter percent or two and a half percent to the...
Right, and that's the conversation we're going to have with the town this evening, is just having the conversation that the assessment, the, the amount, number moving forward to the town, you know, has been offset by school choice for years.
Right.
And so, you know, it's getting to a point now where we've, you know, we've kind of maxed that out, and so moving forward, that that number may increase slightly for the next few years, also depending on contract and that kind of thing, what those numbers look like.
So were we able to look into last year at all, where we had a big encumbrance at the end of the year, that, in the reports that I had, that looked like we were somewhat under budget for the regular budget?
I have, I have looked at it, having, I have not dug into the details of each expenditure to figure out what all of that is about. I will tell you, because I built this, there's no fact in this. This is pretty...
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, it looks like last year we underspent our budget from the town, and we returned money to the town, which is fine, and that went into their free cash flow. But typically, I think we would have used the free cash, we would have used the school choice, we would have moved some of that back into the town budget, and used up the full town budget, which would not have depleted our school choice quite so much.
Right. And I think that's, again, just one of those things where, you know, for all of the towns in the union, I'm really putting a very close eye on school choice.
So I just want to be clear, if I'm talking to the town about that, that that's true, that that's what happened?
Do you know what the number was last year, off the top of your head?
Oh, it's pretty big. It's like $170,000.
I've never heard of it.
Yeah, I would have to...
That's what I wanted to try and understand.
Right. And I just didn't get a chance yesterday to go into that, because I was, again, trying just to do some other things around grants and whatever, and make sure that things were in a good place.
And if that's what happened, that's what happened. It's just that it would be good for the storyline with the town to say, look, and I did check with the town, and they did have a pretty good amount, it looked like, back from us last year. So that sort of helps with the case that, you know, we wouldn't have depleted our school choice funds.
Well, typically, typically in the past, if we've had some extra money at the end of the year, and we had those certain projects that we've looked at, like floor coverings and stuff like that, we would try to use it to offset some of those costs like that. So to say it's 170, I've never heard of a number in all the years I've been, I mean, I may be wrong, but I'm just saying that this seems like a weird number, because we would have talked about, okay, we have this money, what projects we do. Unfortunately, Chrissy wasn't aboard quite yet at the end of the year and stuff like that. There was a lot of transition, and I think we might have put some things on hold because of what was going on in our school at that time. So maybe there was a little bit more money, but we also went forward with some more of these floor coverings that we used the money the year before that was left over, we used it, correct me if I'm wrong...
Did we do that last year? I wasn't sure that we...
I know we did the year before.
No, but the year before, but I think we used some of the money that was, that we had left to take care of some of the floors, and I think a couple other little things, you know, if I remember well.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I just think that, one, it's good to think about for this year, if we do end up with a surplus, we want to make sure that we're thinking about how to best use, because we could move monies from school choice over there to pay for certain budget items, potentially.
Wait a minute, say that again?
Right?
Well, I mean, we could, we could potentially offload some stress on school choice.
Right. So if the budget has room in it, which this year, again, it looks like it might, because you guys are new and you haven't really gotten up the ramp yet of what things cost, and it's going, you might be able to move a little money and save some more of the school choice, preserve the school choice funds at the end of the year.
Because you're building up that quicker.
And that would just give us a little more cushion, which is good.
Right.
And I'm also working right now on...
It's kind of a financial magic in the background.
Right.
I'm also working on right now, just trying to sort of do a, you know, what I would call a soft encumbrance, because I'm not doing it in the financial software, but being able to project out to the end of the year, so you'll have an idea of where potentially you will stand if things are running the course here. So I haven't finished that work yet, but that's something that'll get finished certainly very soon.
I'll do that number for tonight, as much as I can.
I'm just, so I'm just thinking that, like, it's good to look at the cushion, but I'm sort of guessing that we might have a little more cushion potentially at the end of the year because of that, so 38 could become the 50, which is good.
And again, that's a, that's a conservative estimate, and maybe some costs that don't come in quite as high as I'd anticipated them to be. But I want, I would rather err on the side of caution than the other way, so.
So what, has there been much discussion about the change to the position here at Whately? What is the, you know, we don't want to necessarily do that, but I'm just...
We haven't had an in-house conversation.
So this is sort of the first airing of the idea?
Correct, outside of administration.
Okay. And that impacts the person's benefits at all, if they're a half-time? Is that changing? You might want to look at that.
Yeah, it would.
Now, we'd just be through the town, not through us.
Yeah.
And that sort of, the school would be through the town.
Yeah, I was thinking more from their perspective. Okay. So that's the biggest change. The other thing is the IA, trying to decide whether or not we want to include that.
I always have, I always have a question about school choice sending. We have nine, do we have an idea? I think it's been done in the past, but since what was going on last year and the year before, maybe we can find out who the nine, who the nine are possibly. You know, maybe we can get some of the nine back to us.
It's on page six, if you're looking.
Sometimes it's a situation, there's one that I know of right now, where a family was living in one of the other towns, and then they moved to Whately, but they wanted to keep their kids in school if they're done and all along, so not really a statement about that.
You think they would come here next year? You think they would come here next year if they were...
No, we miss a particular family, the two kids are older, so you'd be pulling them from where they are in the fourth and sixth grade.
We also have an IA in every class that other schools in the district don't, from what I understand, right?
Why do you think all the schools in the district don't?
No, Deerville doesn't, Senglin does.
Conway does.
Conway does.
Some of them share...
Maybe share, depending on, depending on need. But it is, it's a good thing to...
It's great.
Good thing to be selling, yeah. I understand where you're going with that, and I did that as, you know, at Frontier, you know, looking at the changes, all the decisions made when people are going to seventh grade, we track down and try to figure out every single one, and, you know, there's...
Well, you know, since we know what the two are, then we come down to seven. I mean, because what was happening the last couple of years, possibly, maybe we can get...
The in-district one is the in-district one, and it could be a special placement. And so that now you're down, you're down to six, and so you can get it all the way down to maybe one or two, and then, you know, I don't know if it's a part of...
We could do some advertising.
Well, we're in the process now of figuring out...
How many slots we have and...
We'll figure that out.
Okay.
But in terms of where to advertise, I know in the past, they've taken out a small ad in the greenfield recorder, but I'm not sure that that's actually...
You technically have to do that under the law.
Same.
You have to have...
Right, but in terms of having that be the thing that causes people to say, oh, I think I'll go check them out, and I don't...
Do we have it on our website, how many openings in different grades we have right now? Just a...
No, we could do it.
That's probably...
There's a couple of classes that have smaller numbers.
Quite small.
I mean, I'm not sure when we start advertising for it, when we start taking applications...
Right now, because right now, we're starting to begin their planning for next year.
You're going to like the playgroups in the other towns? I don't know if pediatricians offices would, I suppose.
You know, when do we start having numbers like on preschool? You know, since that's, it's so, it's almost an old entity.
You're saying preschool registrations, kindergarten registrations?
Preschool.
Right now.
I'm just thinking about preschool, because their own fund, funds, part of that program there, and we never want to dip into any of their funds, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, but if they have higher amounts and we need to get something, like you were talking about earlier today, possibly we can, we can dip into it for $5,000 or $10,000 out of that fund to help pay for something if we need something, that's all.
It has to stay towards early ed, right, that money?
I don't...
Well, early childhood revolving is the tuitions for the typicals that come into the program. So obviously, that's to offset the expenses that are incurred in educating them, so yeah.
So for the, for the 20 budget, it looks like we're budgeting $46,000 for the early childhood, is that right on the last page here?
That's what's being used as offsets in the early childhood revolving fund?
Yeah.
So...
Which version are you on, one or two?
It would be the same in both versions, in terms of that offset, yes. Yeah, so out of early childhood revolving, and I'm just trying to verify the balance in there, so you'd know that up top, but right now, and that's pretty much the same as it is at the current fiscal year.
So page is that on 12?
On page 12, right at the bottom, under that early childhood column.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can see the total.
Thank you.
And it offsets a couple of salaries within the, within the budget.
But I have this year that we're at 88,000 in the fund.
That could very well be, but that's probably being used to purchase materials and supplies. That's not being funneled through the general fund.
Right.
Where I show it is when the general fund and some other funding source intersects. So there's probably more in early childhood than that, but it's probably being used for materials and supplies and other things that are not being, cost shared, as it were, with the general fund.
It's in here as one salary for 19,270, the other one is for 27,000, for the money that, that we're using in that development account.
So I just want to make sure that I get the correct balance.
So you're saying they could very well spend 88,000, it's just that it's not reflected through?
Right, or they might carry a little over into next year as some startup funds until kids come into the program and you start getting tuition revenue, so.
And that 88, though, is not buried in the, I guess what I'm trying to say, is there anything we can pull out of the general to move to the early childhood?
It would have to be early childhood related.
Related.
Yeah, that's all. And I would have to check with the early childhood coordinator to see what her spending plan is for that tuition.
Can you get me this?
Yeah, and I have a hard copy of that, and I don't have it with me, I apologize.
Do you want me to print that out? So it looks like they bring in 138,000 a year, which is a good amount.
Which is...
A lot more than they spend.
I mean, for the, we used to go from half, we're this half a day program, then we tried it for a full year, and we, I don't think we gave it enough a chance, and then, and then when we brought it back, I think it's been a big success, and, you know...
So here's a question, if we get a smaller budget approved, but at the end of the year we have more money left over, could we reinstate some of the things that we're thinking that we don't, we don't need right now? You know what I'm saying? Like, if it turns out that we have a cushion, a bigger cushion than we are trying to keep? Is that one way to think about this?
I mean, we could relieve the pressure on school choice and make more school choice funds available to you, let's put it that way.
Right. And then we could use those school choice funds to...
But again, you want to be mindful, higher, that you're on a slippery slope with school choice. And so continuing to dip into that well is a very slippery slope to be on.
For, you know, for years and years and years, every time we go to these meetings and the finance, we go, oh, you got X amount of, you know, school choice, like, yeah, we have X amount in school choice for, if something happens, we can, we can dip into it instead of coming to you guys. You know, and their mentality sometimes is, they'd rather see it spent than worry about something down the road, you know, if something happens. But, I mean, for years, we always had that little bit of cushion to help us for all the time, I mean, it...
What were you talking about, if there's money left over, from the town money or from school choice? Both.
Yes, so from the general budget.
If we just sort of don't spend the full budget for this current year, is there a way to capture that and then use it again?
Right.
Which, again, is not money that we'll get every year, so that's the danger.
It would require reclassifying some expenses to the local budget that had been posted to school choice.
I can't remember all the years I've been on the board, that we had a big surplus other than a few thousand dollars that we gave back. If it's 170 last year, and it could have been 170 last year, there was a lot of, there was a lot of things going on there that we didn't want to interrupt, a lot of things last summer, so maybe we did give it back, but typically, I can remember, it's only been a few thousand.
That was an error on the central office's part to do that, because we should have left enough in there for this exact reason that we have right now.
Yeah, I mean, again, we don't really know what happened.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to the bottom of it yet.
We'll get the data, get the exact numbers before we start this. I don't want to gas on camera and...
But it's part of the story. It is part of the story, I think, of why we're where we are right now. The other thing I'm just looking at is, like, the reality is, if we just kept everything the same and we go with the increases, it's like a nine to 10 increase to the budget. So we're always in a position of having to cut, cut things out of the budget just to meet the salaries, which is the real challenge here.
Yeah. Well, and the 9% on the salaries is because we have moved some from school choice into local. That's why that number is as large as it is.
So that's part of that.
Yes. So even with the reduction in the guidance, school psychologist person, part of the reason why that is up as much as it is, is because we have taken some money, taken some salaries and put it back into the local budget.
So that's not your over-year increase, that's adding positions to...
Back into the local. And again, depending on where you land at this time next year, you may be looking at potentially putting some more back into the local budget yet again, depending on what happens with school choice numbers, what happens with ingoings and outcomings, and what happens at that December adjustment moment, you know?
And what would happen if we went to the town with that version one?
They're not going to like it, that's for sure.
Not at all.
No.
Not at all.
I would guess in a town the size of Whately, they would tell you to go back and figure something out.
Having the biggest budget in town doesn't mean that we keep on making it... Having the biggest budget in town doesn't mean that we keep on making it bigger and bigger, we, you know, we have to.
Right.
As long as it's.
Any percentage point in the biggest budget in town is also a bigger index, so.
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept version number two with the lower amount, uh, two-point-six-eight.
So you want it without the.
Without the IA.
But should we go to them with the, the three-point-nine? You know, and talk to them and see what they say?
Well, the difference, the difference is if, if we need the additional IA. So if we get the additional IA and we get four more school choice kids, if we do, I mean, it's all an if, it will, it'll probably take care of the, of the IA for that position if, if we need that person. So if you go with the higher one and we don't need it, we're going to get to a point where we're going to have maybe bigger surplus when June comes around possibly.
Transition some more of those school choice things into that budget. I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to try for the bigger number.
With the very lowest and then of course they're going to want that, but we should ask for more and see what they say.
And talk through the situation. I mean, I think in order to get more school choice, we need to continue to make Waitly as high quality school as we can.
Right.
So it's kind of a circle, you know, chicken and egg, like you don't want to cut so much that.
Yeah, but we're not cutting, but we're not cutting anything that's going to deter kids that come here for school choice for what we're making, what we're, what we're making cuts for.
You're not cutting the arts, say, for example, which would be a whole other animal, you know. But we're not going to get more if we don't ask for more, if we don't start with that, we can always.
But if you, if you remember over the years, I mean, you've been on the board a couple of years, so we've always had under a two, two and a half budget. So levy cap is two and a half, we've been under two and a half, which has been great, that's what they like. We don't get too much flack, the only time we ever get flack is when we have too much school choice money. We don't have too much school, school choice money. So if we come around two and a half, you know, sick, two-point-six-eight sounds pretty good at two-point-five.
Right.
But three-point-nine is almost a one and a half more percentage points.
But they know that.
We need that because the school choice is going away. I mean, I guess that's, this is the time to ask for that, when we don't have that school choice money there. And they can say no, and we can have a conversation about it, but if we don't ask for it now. Are you talking, are you talking about presenting to them the one that includes the IA but still, still cuts that up?
Version two.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't really like the, the IA being broken out because I also am kind of confused about like the sped part of that, like, don't we get reimbursed for the sped part sometimes?
Only if it.
Only if it's.
It's a certain level.
Yeah, circuit breaker is extraordinary.
Yeah, you're talking something over, something that starts at twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, you don't get any of the percentage until it goes over thirty thousand and these, these kids aren't in that type of group, correct me if I'm wrong.
It's forty-five thousand.
Okay.
What's forty-five, I mean?
Yeah, and circuit breaker is subject, that's a state funding source, so circuit breaker is subject to the winds of the law.
Right, so we don't.
I mean, technically, it's, it's supposed to be capped, it, it's supposed to be a seventy-five percent reimbursement. I think I've, in my career, seen it maybe twice funded at that level.
Mostly when you're thinking of circuit breaker, you're thinking about placement students, not students that are in house.
Right.
Right.
Those are kids who have very significant needs.
Yeah, those are.
And the difference in money is, has nothing to do with, you know, the circuit breaker money or anything like that. It's basically the difference is, is the one IA that we're, we might need, we might not need. We may be able to have enough of staff.
Well, how do we determine?
But it could also be adding back part of the psychologist counselor potentially, like, I guess I just don't want to necessarily tie it to a particular position if we don't have to, because we don't really know yet where we're going to end up, right? So why not ask to try and keep things as consistent as we can, which would be to me the three-point-nine, which would give us a little more money to either, you know, hire the FTE back for point-seven-five instead of one, or hire an IA.
Good morning, everyone.
Whatever ends up being more.
The time in the office is eight-fifty-seven.
That's.
Lunch today will be chicken quesadillas or tomato soup. Also because of the wind and the cold, the temperature's always supposed to be around eleven with the wind chill factor, so we'll have indoor recess.
Okay.
Today to do the pledge, we have Jacob and Duncan.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a great day.
So my other point about the sped IA is that I think that when we started the preschool, we lost some of our sped IA because that teacher was sped IA who is now the preschool teacher, right? Am I right? Do you remember Bob? Originally that was her role here before there was a preschool.
She was a special ed teacher.
Or teacher, right, sorry. So we lost some special ed capacity. So this would be backfilling for some of that now that she's not necessarily focused on that as much. But I'm, I'm happy trying for the three-point-nine because I think really fundamentally we're at this cliff and we need the, we are going to need to push more to this town. But going forward, if we do that now, we shouldn't need to keep doing it every year. This should be the sort of one year to get us at a slightly higher level. We can rebuild school choice hopefully, and then we can stay at the two percent increase for the town. It seems like, is that?
I, I'm.
I mean, otherwise next year we're going to be having the same conversation potentially.
Good.
Right?
I, I, and I'm, I mean, I mean.
I feel like now's a good time to do it, especially we gave them back money last year, this was the year to do it.
Well, and school choice is so volatile, I mean, that's, that's.
Right, that's the hard part.
My deep concern for you is that school choice is so volatile that even at thirty-eight thousand rolling forward, that's not a lot of money. That's a, you know, three students and a special ed increment and you, you know.
I mean, most important is that we have a lot of student, or babies in town that we want to come here, so we want to keep the school something, a place they want to come to and not go somewhere else potentially.
Which is why we did not.
Another.
Right, which is why we did not look at other programs that would be attractive to students. You know, you've got a strong arts component here, we didn't want to touch that. When you're talking these kinds of dollars, you're not talking nickel and diming your discretionary accounts, you are talking personnel. There's just no way around it. It's, it's a very painful process to be through. I've been through it a lot, so.
And we are counting some things, it looks like, so.
It's, it's, it's tough, it's tough to look at a budget where in the past, and I'm not saying I don't like the way you show things here, but in the past, they never showed this other column over here. They just showed the top one at a percentage and the bottom one at percentage. Some of these numbers, we never had these percentages on the right side here. We never had that before and sometimes you look at, wow, fifty percent more, fifty percent less.
Right, but fifty percent could be like going from a thousand to five hundred, yeah, or the other way around, yeah.
You know, I don't, to give us two numbers on the bottom doesn't mean, that, that tells me that they've looked at both numbers pretty hard between the three, the, Judy, Chrissy and Darius. I mean, I don't want, I, I personally don't want to go to the town and, and ask for almost four percent. I'd rather ask the town for two-point-seven percent.
But we're not going to get anything more if we don't ask for it and they know this has been coming, we've been telling them every year, right?
But the, but the, correct me if I'm wrong, the diff, the difference, the only thing different is that IA. And the IA is a new IA that we're talking on, we're not talking about funding an IA that's in the house right now. We're talking about bringing another IA that we might need.
How do we determine if we need it?
Or, or we take care of the person with what we have in house already. They wouldn't opt, they wouldn't make a suggestion either way whether, you know, whether they could use them or they couldn't use the person that they could hire. But that's the only thing difference is the IA difference of twenty-one thousand dollars between three-point-nine and two-point-six-eight is that one IA. We're not eliminating, we could be bringing another one in, could. I'm looking for guidance from these two over here, so.
Right, it's, because it's up in the air and there's questions about what certifications this person would need to have, it may not be someone I can pull from, from in house.
So they might have to hire someone.
If they have to hire somebody, then we would hope for, like someone said, we had a hundred and seventy thousand. You know, there again, if there was a hundred and seventy thousand, I didn't know, I, I didn't remember any hundred and seventy thousand that we gave back to the town last year, but if we did and it's our fault that we didn't try to spend some of that money possibly on, on things that we really need.
Or save it, not even spend it.
Well, we couldn't save it because we can't put it in, we have to give it back to the town anyway, so.
We could have spent less.
Used it for expenses that were used in school choice.
Break, we spent less school choice and that's why I don't understand what the logic was on that, because that is what. Will that end the loss of school choice this year? So remember.
Right.
If you're looking at the numbers, you would have thought you were a lot healthier until we lost a few students this year, and so.
Yeah, that December adjustment took my breath away.
And it's important to remember that even within those numbers, we're already adjusted for school choice for next year as well.
Right.
So.
So if, if we don't have to hire a new person, a new IA, does that put the counseling position back together?
Right, then I kind of go back to the first budget. Well, basically, I mean, the town's going to vote a bottom line. It's your job to determine how that money gets spent. So if the IA stays in the budget, you wind up not needing it. Obviously, you've got some wiggle room that that's your responsibility as a school committee to figure out what you're going to do with this money that is not going to be expended for this purpose, but you think it needs to be spent somewhere else. That's a decision you make, we do a budget transfer, it's done. So, you know.
Right, in some cases it doesn't really, like we could just say we want to ask for a three percent increase and then we can allocate it, like we need to be careful where we're putting it, but it doesn't have to be quite so specific.
Well, this is what they always look for. We usually, we usually have given this in the past in January. Now it's the end of February already and they still don't have it until today or tonight when we present it to them and stuff, so. They haven't even looked at it. I mean, we've looked at it a little bit.
Yeah.
But, and not until we vote on whatever we do here that they're going to see tonight for the very first time.
Well, we've been previewing with them that this is coming.
Yeah, we've been previewing, but there again, they haven't seen any number, you know, like I said, they've always seen a budget from us in January and basically almost two months later that we're coming out. No fault to anybody, just the way things are.
Trying to investigate what was going on.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, if we show up at two-six, two-six-eight tonight, wow, you guys did a good job, you're trying to keep it at two-point-five. And I, and I don't disagree with you having extra money to take, start paying for positions out of school choice, but we're not, it's not like we're deleting an IA.
No, I, I've given, I, I agree with you, we don't need the IA, but then I'm going back to do we need to cut a position? Or do we go to them with like, this is what our full increase would be this year? And how do we shave that without having to make such a real cut?
But your full increase is close to seven percent, which I'm guessing I never.
This five-point-five-six?
Well, if you're, if you, yeah, well, still, I suppose it's five and a half percent, that's three percent over what.
Right.
You know, and I don't know the politics of Waitly like you do.
I'm trying to get between two and a half and five and a half.
Yeah.
Like, what is a reasonable number to ask for?
So do you want to take them.
Because in the past.
Do you want to take them budget one at five-point-six, five-point-five-six? Have a discussion regarding what money was returned last year. And that's significant because we would be asking this at all if we didn't return that money.
Right.
And so in having that discussion with them.
That's, I think that's a good conversation to have, I know it's a little late in the game to be having that conversation, but.
I mean, we're late no matter what.
At least you're figuring it out now.
I'd rather, I'd rather do it right, I'd rather do it right late than do it, than just be late and say, well, we're late and that's kind of the story of hell. There's, we're still have time to.
To tweak this.
We have time to tweak this right up to town meeting floor, you know what I mean? Let's be honest, I know that's not how, that's not the best practice, but. Um, you know, we got to do what's best for the kids and we got to do what's best for the towns financially, so.
Right. I mean, I think we need to give Waitly a good budget to keep trying to be the best school it can be and to continue to attract as many students as it can, whether they're residents or school choice. And by cutting things, we're not going to do that, like that's just not going to help that situation, in my opinion.
On the flip side, and this is me speaking from, coming from other lands, to have a full-time guidance psych person in a school this size is unheard of anywhere else but here.
Right.
And that's why when I took a look at this, I said, is this a place?
Right, so maybe there's a happy medium between that, like maybe she's not full-time, maybe she's three-quarters, which is a little less than, I don't know.
Right.
Than half. I just, I think also a cut at the school is going to be traumatic, like the people don't like to have, to have that happen.
But it's, but it's not like, but it's not like we're cutting a teacher that's traumatic, we're just.
It's a person's, a person's.
It's a small school, it's a small school, there's a fabric here that we want to try and preserve.
I, I'm not a fan of being the first principal that has to cut something. It's haven't been cut in a long time.
We're also talking about a budget.
I definitely.
I mean, it's.
But I'm prepared to be told I have to go.
You live with somebody that's a select person at town.
I know, and I'm happy to ask for this, like I don't know, I guess I don't know why we can't ask. I, maybe I'm naive in some town politics.
I mean, if we ask, if we ask for the three-point-six-eight and by town meeting floor, hey, all of a sudden we went down to two-point, two-point-something.
That's great.
I'm not sure if we'll know by town meeting if we do need the IA or not. And at that time, we can take it out of the budget and we look like, we look.
We look like.
Like, what's the word?
Good citizens, good budget citizens. I mean, and we're just sharing what the reality is right at this moment. In May, we'll have a lot better idea of where the year end is going to be, what the needs will be next year, we could. I'd rather ask for the most now and then go this way rather than have to go back and say we need more, we actually, oh, guess what, we need more.
Well, there's a couple of things that I'm concerned, first of all, I don't, I don't want to cut anything. But if we're talking about putting off this decision about what's, what's going to be cut, we have contractual issues to, to think about and just um, common courtesy to let someone know if their job is being changed. And we can't wait till June to see what was left in the budget to do that.
Right, yeah. Well, I think we've figured that with the finance committee tonight.
So, I mean, well, I mean, you're. I mean, clearly, if you go with the, the larger number to finance committee to have the discussion, you can't go with a smaller number to have a discussion.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, even if they're watching, there's a kind of defeats purpose to it, but that's, you know, it's, it is what it is, it's the same day kind of feel. So it does put us in to have a good conversation because, you know, part of, I think, and part of our goal has been to work tighter with the town instead of this school-town, two entities.
Let them help us solve these problems.
These small, and again, the same kind of feeling in all the towns is that the, the small schools with very tight budgets have to work hand in hand with the committees of the town and have greater communication.
Right.
You know what I mean? And so going there and having a conversation about it, um, you know, at least it'll. The way I'm reading people here, at least we'll feel people have all their information if they have to make a decision that involves reductions in the budget, reduction of staffing and that kind of stuff. Because that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing here is that, it's like, okay, I understand black and white, but there's a small unknown about how, you know, the finance committee feels about this and what happened last year with the return of money that wouldn't have put this in this position had we handled that differently. So let's have that conversation before we go ahead and we change any kind of programming of the school, that's what I'm seeing. It does, again, it's slowing this process that we're a month behind in, but what are we, what are we rushing for?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Rushing for a budget that's done so we can step, you know, step away from the table? Or we, we, we're better off getting it right because we're really, the corrections we're making are for long-term.
Right.
You know, different communities are in different situations with the budgets where, you know, the corrections are, are greater than this and, you know, this is really about, the reductions here is about building a sustainable budget for long periods and the town has to be a part of that decision.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so I kind of, I get what you're saying there.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we also have to be prepared to have a.
Right, I'm prepared to hear differently.
At the last meeting, Joyce indicated that this wouldn't be shock to anyone that we've hit this.
Right, she said they won't like it, but.
Yeah, they've hit this point where we need to ask for more.
Not to change the subject, but, and I think I could say this, but the sprinkler bids came in.
Yes, I saw it, and they're a little high.
A little high, and, and I could probably say this, but the town wants us, town wants us to help pick up the difference.
Right.
So, we don't know exactly how much that is, it might be only a few thousand, but there again, they're asking us for money to help pay for the sprinkler system, that we're trying to keep a budget low enough, but now they're asking us for money to help pay for the sprinkler system.
Right.
And I understand that.
And I think we need a conversation, like, is it because they just think we have extra money and they, they don't know the situation we're in, or is it because they don't have the money?
That's how the conversation tonight, like.
That's what I want to know.
You know, the bid's getting higher, and now you guys want us to pay for the difference, but we're trying to keep the budget as low as we can, but.
But I would ask, too, if I were them, and say, don't you have, do you have that money? I mean.
It's up to us to show them we don't.
I'm willing to make a deal. I will take.
Want to take it out of your salary?
I'll take it as a sprinkler if they'll go as version one.
Right, exactly.
It's a win, right?
But I just wanted.
What do we want to do?
Because the sprinkle would have to come from school choice, I don't think you have it because of long-term subpay and all of that kind of business.
It's, it's not a huge number.
Yeah, but I'm not sure.
But it's still a number.
Yeah.
It's still a number that they're asking for us.
No, I agree with you, like.
And we're trying to come up with the lowest budget possible.
Right. Well, let's talk about that tonight, too, honestly.
Yeah.
This is an example of why we can't keep taking these kinds of things down.
Especially if they, I mean, I'm not saying that we should use all the free cash in the world to offset anything, but if it's, if it's less than $5,000 and we have, we'll say, we'll say it's probably over 100, but if we have $100,000 in free cash, why can't they just kick in the rest of, the rest of it to pay for it? Instead of taking out of our budget that strap, almost they, they're going to say, well, you had 170,000 last year. There might be, there might be a good reason for that.
Let's make sure we're in numbers correct before it flies around as much as it is.
I started to look at it yesterday, but I haven't had a chance to dig deep, so.
Can we just say that was a mistake with like a math?
Will we know?
No, but I don't envision it as, the rest of my day, part of the story.
So where do we get that information?
Um, I will have to go into the accounting software, dig into the detail a little more and see what I can see.
I'll give Brian a call and see if he knows offhand, too.
Yeah, and then we'll have to back into it, that's the problem here, is that I'm backing into what I don't know.
Yeah, but they should know how much on there and they should receive.
Right.
Okay, well, I would like to.
Want me to make the motion?
You got to retroy your last motion, just in case anybody's picking.
Well, it is version, I'm going to make a motion on version two with the higher number at 3.90.
Okay, and let me just give you a number, because you should vote a number number.
Number number would be on the last page?
Yeah, except for, yeah, I'd like to take off that bottom line from any version we bring forward.
Okay, yep, that's not a problem, I can do that, so it'll be $1,746,837.
And do we need to keep the notes about how we're getting to that money in terms of your FTE, or?
I thought this was the number two.
Just to give us more flexibility on that top line here.
Okay, so we want the 1,000, 1,746,837.
It's already public.
You got that, Larry?
1,746.
No, 1 million.
1 million.
1,746,837.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'm just hoping not to get into that, but, yeah, I'd rather go with that number.
The 3.9% increase, so the 1,746,837.
That does, the difference in an IA and the reduction of the other staff is not, does not equal.
Right, right. So the IA is still in the budget.
Right, you're creating, the decision is being made that way.
With the, with the extra IA?
With the reduction.
And with the reduction.
If you truly wanted to go into tonight without that decision made and having a discussion, you're making that decision by putting that budget forward.
So the difference is.
Shouldn't give you so many options, we shouldn't have an order.
I know.
The difference is, it's just the IA, right?
Do we have to specify?
AI and a half of the.
It doesn't have to specify, but the, the difference in the money, it, it's not dollar, it's not either one or the other, because one is, is costs more than the other. Reduction is more money than the additional IA.
But it could be moving the position back to 75.
We could adjust it that way, but there is, correct, correct, that could, that could happen that way, too, but.
Is the other way to look at it.
But, those, right, we don't, school committee really shouldn't get into that job.
No.
You know what I mean?
I'd rather not, the one deciding those. I'd like to give you the money and then you decide where it goes.
Or the three of them, decision on that, that particular position.
Well, based on how much money you, based on how much, our job is based on how much money we have, is to provide the best programming within the walls, so, you know what I mean, it's, if you start to micromanage, if you spend a little bit here, spend a little bit there, it gets, we listen, we certainly listen in, in that kind of stuff, I just want to, you don't want to give two cut of those weeds. You may, you may want to, but you probably shouldn't.
Well, so, what are you suggesting, then, that we vote on, the 3.9s, or?
That's what's, the motion on.
That's something on the floor.
No, if you're going to, I think if you're going to go have a discussion with, with the finance committee tonight, you bring in 5.56, and.
That's with no cuts and.
That's with, that's how much, that's our, that's our.
We're prepared to look hard at this, but this is what it would be if we don't have that.
That's version one without the sped IA in there.
Correct.
Correct. And then that, I, I don't, I don't believe that's going to fly, but it's going to have the conversation you want.
Right.
And so, and I, you know, and I may just be, being fair about it, that's, you know, just having.
Right, and we don't necessarily want to end up there, but we want to show them the reality of where we are.
Maybe they'll just say yes.
So you want the 5.56 number, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
I'm not going to vote on the 5.56. I'll vote on the 3.9 with the reduction and, and keeping the sped IA in there just in case we need that sped IA for that child. I can't, I can't bring a 5.56 to us, even if it's conversation. You know, maybe 50% of them will like it, but the other 50% is going to hate it, worse than the 50% that may.
Well, I guess, that's my point, is I, I'd like to vote for the 3.9, knowing that it's, we're not really sure how that money will be spent totally yet, we're not committing to any particular, but it could be a cut.
It could be, it could be, now, I have an IA and then, and depends on what they say about 50 or 75, or whatever percentage on the thing, but there again.
So we can't just present this version as a, if, if we kept everything intact and added the one thing that may need to be added, this is what it would look like. Without, without doing that, something has to be cut, or, the version one.
Right, and, and, and Bob is saying that the number's too high.
It's just too high.
It is, it is.
It is very high.
Even when I'm saying it. My people will sell 3.9.
Yeah.
But what's the harm in them knowing part of, that our decision-making is based on, this is the need?
Yeah, I think we have to show some good faith in showing that we've done some work to reduce what we can, but, like, this is our limit.
That's why I think it's important to, for them to know that.
Well, I think you could talk about.
Well, we can talk about it, definitely.
We could, we could set it up so it shows this is where we're at.
This is where we were and this is where we've gone.
Can we put that on, we'll do that as our summary sheet, we'll, we'll show where, how it got to where we're at.
Yeah, yeah.
And, because that, that does feed into that conversation about, really, school choice is what hurt the budget this year. And if we gave back anything over $50,000, that was, that was, that was, I don't know what the.
That was being really good to the budgets.
Well, yeah, and like I say, I've looked at numbers, but I, I'm at a point where I just need to verify things, so.
I mean, the other, and then the next question is, why did we have that much extra in the town budget? Like, what was it? But, but really, the argument is that we should have just put more of the school choice monies.
We should have held a larger amount of school choice over and less school choice has been applied to those, and I don't know.
Is it easy to see what we spent exactly on school choice last year for everything? Whether it was a snow blower, or was it, was a, can you, can, or do we have anything like that that we had in the past, because?
There are detailed reports I can pull, it would pull a purchase order number and an amount that I would have to go in and look at the purchase order, see what the purchase order is.
I don't want to do it if it's going, I don't want to do it if it's going to take you a half a day or day, I mean, I know you have a lot on your plate and stuff with everything that's going on.
I mean, and I, I can't do that by tonight, I hope I'm honest.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not with it, but, I know.
This is where the year ended with the school choice budget, this is last, what we got at the end of the year. So, there's a big, there's, over what the budget actually was, is the total, right?
Right, but again, the person in the accounting office who handles all of this came through with an ending balance, who verified it with the town, and that's where that school choice number came from. So, that may not have had every.
Every little thing.
Everything posted to it, yeah.
And I got a funny feeling, I'm, I'm just looking for one particular thing, it's not on this sheet, so, and I won't mention what it is, but I could tell, I could tell it's not on that sheet, so that's why I'm trying to, this whole school, you know.
Yeah. Okay, well, we need to move forward.
I, I personally don't think we should say anything about 5.56, and then we brought it down to 3.90, I mean, it's, it's our job to accept one of these proposals, it's their job to tell us what, what we suggest. If we have to make other cuts after 3.90, we know the other thing that we may have, might have to do, but we would like the 3.9, this is where we feel comfortable with, whether they feel comfortable with it or not.
I just want to make sure that they understand we're compromising the program.
Yeah, I disagree, I, I think they should know that we've already done some work to come down to that number.
And that it represents.
Well, we've done that every year, we, we've always had a little higher number, we've always.
Yeah, but it's never involved a cut of some sort.
That's significant, I think.
Well, I, I think a few years ago, we had an override that we cut some IAs, I'm going to say, I'm trying to remember, two or three aides.
There was an override.
An override, when we did the override, we had, I think we had to make some cuts, and the override was a group package, because a library needed something, a school needed something, so instead of pinpointing voting on certain things, this was our package and it, and it passed, to help pay for certain things, but I think we still lost.
I think it's important for them to know, it's really significant, cutting, cutting a position here, right?
We're cutting, we're saying we're cutting a half a position that Judy's gave, gave her point of view, Darius has given his point of view on that position, you know? I think if, if I'm right, Lynn talked about different positions, as she was, as superintendent, was talking about different positions here, that with what Judy said was some of the things that Lynn was saying about different positions, sometimes, you know, we don't have that many children for that particular.
Right, but that person then can add other things to the school potentially in that role, which we may or may not need, but it doesn't hurt the school, it only enhances the school, so I think that would be my argument against, against cutting it, is there's certain enhancements that we would lose that we don't have, and we may not need them, so we may have to look really carefully at that, but.
I just don't want to throw a bunch of numbers into selectmen or finance committees things, saying, okay, you, you started.
Right, I agree, we don't.
5. something, then we have 3.9, what else can you cut? You know, we're, we feel comfortable at 3.9, if they say, well, you've got to come in lower, we're going to have to make, somebody's going to have to make more cuts on that 3.9, we know what we can have, we could do.
Well, I think that it's important for them to know that we've already been trying to come down.
They also need to know as they're.
That will be listed in there, though, because we would give a, they'd see the summary sheet.
Right.
The updated summary sheet, the updated summary sheet shows the reductions.
Yeah.
So we, we'll definitely explain how we got to that number.
Because 3.9 is higher than it's been in, I don't know, ever.